Good evening and welcome to the Security Safety Transportation Subcommittee meeting. We are at the George M. Little, George Rom Little Theater at Brockton High School. And today's Tuesday, August 27th, and the time is 5:31 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order if you can join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to establish a quorum. Mrs. Sullivan? Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
And the chair is present, so we do have a quorum. Mr. Rodriguez is actually running a few minutes late, but he will be joining us shortly. The first item on our agenda is discussion of security and safety update. Superintendent Tahiliani?
Thank you. So I'm providing the update tonight because, as you would imagine, our security director is busy at work here at the high school. Since his start date on August 19th, Mr. Robert Jackson has been able to introduce himself to various stakeholders, including, of course, the school police, who are very important to our security operation. Mr. Jackson has also been meeting with Principal McCaskill and the staff at BHS, especially in relation to Yonder Pouch implementation. Our security director and the high school team have been busy with safety service specialist interviews, and we have, we already have 17 of the positions slated to fill, although we are still in the process of doing the HR paperwork and getting them onboarded. Mr. Jackson and Dr. Cobb's have done a thorough walkthrough and assessment of Brockton High School to review CCTV wiring and hallway installation, SSS, and have identified a few outstanding areas that still require attention and have outlined a plan for addressing them. There's also training being planned to ensure that our access control specialists and our security specialists are all completely aligned in their work. Mr. Jackson has also visited a few other schools just to get an idea of where we are with security in our other buildings as well. He is looking into uniforms for the staff and obviously meeting with operations. Most of all, Mr. Jackson is spending a considerable amount of time watching the daily functions at BHS and learning the floor plan, which in and of itself is a project. He looks forward to providing you with a more comprehensive update once the school year starts, but as of now, as I mentioned, he's focusing on ensuring that we are ready for the start of the school year. And we also are awaiting the DESI audit that should be coming in any day now that will also assist him in his own plans for the upcoming school year.
Thank you, Superintendent. Ms. Oliver?
I just have, sorry, a few state, statement also, suggestion regarding safety. Mr. Jackson is up and running. I appreciate that. Great job. I just want to just bring it to attention, especially as safety specialists, the ones we're hiring, to just make sure that we are going over the boundaries. Making sure that ones we're hiring know where to stand with our students. They're not there to be their friends. They're there to do their job. And also, their responsibility is to make sure the kids are staying, our students are staying in class, not cutting classes, and staying away from trouble. Another thing that I just wanted to bring up, I know months ago with Dr., sorry, with the Mayor Bart Sullivan, we had requested to have a meeting with surrounding businesses regarding, you know, what we should do, how to implement, ways to keep our students safe, but also to make sure the business continue running around Brockton High. I know that meeting, we never stated that we requested businesses to close between 1 and 2. We asked to speak to the business owners, and I know there was an article recently written last week that Starbucks is closing from 1 to 2. And I know there's been a lot of negative outcomes and comments, and I know that we didn't ask for that. We asked that we would like to speak to surrounding business to figure out how we can keep students, you know, from acting out, behaving, but we only have 1% of those kids, and we cannot basically, you know, make them what every other kid that wants to go after school and eat on half a day. The reason why I'm bringing this up is that somebody else who's an elected official reposted that article. And when you repost an article that is kind of negative towards our students, and then we have individuals that it is in the city, that we go shopping together with, that we probably attend church with and other community events, calling our students hooligans and trash is when I say enough is enough. You want to come toe-to-toe with me and as an adult, we can do it. But when you go and repost something that is negative towards our students, and you don't defend our students and allow other residents to call our kids hooligans and trash, is when I have a problem. So before you repost something and you're an elected official, think wisely. You're an adult. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Before I go to Mr. Vega, if the record can reflect, Vice Chair Rodriguez, thank you for joining us. Mr. Vega?
Hello. So, Mr. Jackson has hit the ground running. Couple of questions. What has, you know, and if this isn't something that he's mapped out yet, because he seems to be a very focused individual, what is he seeing as the biggest challenges in his first, you know, couple of weeks on the job? I don't know. Has he, has he shared any of that with you?
He hasn't worded it as such, but just in the communications we've had, what I have gleaned is just ensuring that the security specialists are onboarded. To your point, Ms. Oliver, yes, he, both Mr. Jackson and Mr. McCaskill are aligned on ensuring that the messaging to security specialists is, you know, very clear on what the boundaries are, on how this position might be the same as positions in the past, but how it also is going to be approached differently this year. And so I think it isn't a matter of the school specialists, you know, not being onboard or not being willing. It's just about timing and school year starting and getting people onboarded. So I think that's really the challenge, is just making sure the entire team is ready. So I think there is going to be a lot of training that is also occurring, you know, after the school day, because we're still going to be onboarding people when the school year starts. So to me, that's what I have sort of seen as the largest challenge, especially as our entire focus right now is just on a smooth start to the school year.
Thank you. And I mean, I know it's very early, but are there any resource projections that, you know, either Mr. Jackson or that you're seeing now that, you know, should be on our radar as we think about the next fiscal year?
That's a great question. I don't have an answer to that, but I definitely will get one.
And last part is, do you know if Mr. Jackson is, I mean, to, to Ms. Oliver's point, like, is it, do we, I lost my, is Mr. Jackson going to be able to connect with local businesses and sit down with them?
I think that's one of our priorities all around, Mr. McCaskill, Mr. Jackson, and myself. I think it's important for us to assess the situation, see how things are going, but I know that you had brought to me, you know, one specific business member's concern, and I really appreciate that because that gives us the opportunity to reach out, see what we can do. It is great that now we have a security director, you know, who is onboarded, that there will be security specialists to support that. You know, I do believe the best in our students, and that, yes, you know, students want to hang out after school, but, you know, like, and that's okay, and they bring business, so that's wonderful. And so just making sure that we're encouraging their, you know, their business and them being able to be, you know, contributing members of the economic success of our businesses. So definitely, we want to make sure that that is successful moving forward, and so we will be working with them, dealing with them, making sure that they feel supported by us and getting what they need to, to open their doors and feel comfortable.
And we've had the opportunity to talk about this, but, but a couple of constituents have asked the question, when the DESI audit, security audit comes out, would that be a shared document?
Yes. So they, my understanding is they are going to provide the shareable version, so an executive summary, and then a much more drilled-down version, because it will talk specifically about safety measures that maybe we don't want to discuss publicly, but we could certainly discuss those in executive session, but there will be an overall forward-facing report about what were the findings, what are the overall improvements that we need to make that are clearly visible to everybody, so that we can make sure some of them, hopefully, the last time I spoke to DESI, we've already gotten started on some of them when they gave me their main themes, and so identifying what are the other areas to make sure that we're doing everything we need to do to make our students safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Any other members with any questions or comments? Mr. Sullivan?
Yes. Thank you. As far as the security specialists, I know we were shorthanded a little bit. Have they been hired now?
So we are.
Are we full?
Yes, we're actively hiring them right now, and so getting them onboard, doing the query checks, making sure that they're all onboard. We are, right now, we know that we have filled, although they have not all been onboarded and like officially on the books, but we have identified 17 of the 24, which is great.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Will they be there opening day here?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. So I had a couple of questions. I know Ms. Oliver touched base on the businesses, and I know I've always driven by, and some of the businesses actually have, each one's different, and I know, I've driven by, I've seen McDonald's and a couple others, the students wait outside, and they try to be respectful. So they're businesses near a school. I think it would be great, once our safety, Mr. Jackson has a, like, give him a couple of weeks, get in, the first two, three weeks, just settle in, and then maybe we can maybe meet with him, two at a time, express some of the ideas that you have as far as what you're looking for, see where he is, and then we can probably invite him to a safety Subcommittee meeting to address some of the concerns that we have and see what they're implementing as far as different procedures, his thoughts. I mean, he had wonderful ideas when I spoke with him, so I think we just have to give him at least, it's a new school, it's a new school year, so he's just getting familiar with everything. And I know he's focusing right now on the high school, but he's really for all our schools. So once we get going with Brockton High, I'll give him an opportunity to visit the other schools and see, you know, make his recommendations. So we will have those positions, because we do need them. We're starting new at the high school. We have the Yonder Bags. We have a few different things going on. We definitely need our safety specialists there. Our teachers and our staff and our students have asked for this, so we want to start on the right foot, 2024. So it's important, the first, first month is tough, but it's important that we give them what they need to start the school year safely and get on track. And then if I can just, I know this wasn't on here, but one of our surrounding schools has the Yonder Bags, and East Bridgewater. Actually, my niece told me about it. I was like, really? She's like, Auntie? And she, maybe they're not the Yonder Bags, but very similar. They've had it for a year. I didn't hear anything about it. So I think we're okay. Change is difficult for some, but I think once we get started, this changes for them. They'll focus more, and they'll be able to focus on their studies, and it'll help some of our students. But I just wanted to share that, that little tidbit, because I wasn't even aware, someone had mentioned it, but we weren't sure if it was one of the Bridgwaters, and it's actually, I believe, East Bridgewater. And it's, you know, because we're all talking about it, but it's not negative online, so we got to give it a chance. So, oh, Ms. Sullivan? Oh, we, yep, it's okay.
Fall River is going to implement it now with the Yonder Bags, so, yeah. Maybe they were waiting for us to do it, and then they're going to do it.
I mean, I know Brockton always opens the door on so many levels for others surrounding us, but a lot of them are, and I know Mr. Rodriguez had mentioned it, all over the state, they're talking about it. It's helping our students. I know it's, it's tough for a generation that's used to having cell phones. I started off with a bag phone in 1992, so we've come a long way, but for a generation that's, you know, they rely on the, it is difficult, and change is difficult. Same with the parents. My parents would call the school if there was an emergency, but I get it, and some students, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, if there is documentation, there is a need to have their phone available, they just have to provide that and get that approved by the school. So, you know, it's on a one-on-one basis, figuring what the situation is, but, so thank you. Wishing Mr. Jackson and our safety crew luck as we start. So exciting. Yes, Superintendent?
Yes, and he did apologize he could not be here tonight. It is his seventh day on the job, and so he really is just trying to make sure we're in a race to the finish, and he just started. So he did want to make sure that he was getting everything ready for the school year, but he did want me to let you know that he's very excited to come before you and provide a more comprehensive update once the school year starts.
Mr. Vega?
I just want to apologize. I thought the man was on for a little bit longer than seven days, so my questions were all, you know, my bad. Mr. Jackson, doing a great job.
The ink is drying on the contract as we speak. That's how new he is. So we wish Mr. Jackson luck, and I know years past, I've always stressed, every school should have their emergency manual, because God forbid there's an emergency and you can't get online. I want to see each one of those in the schools. If there's an emergency, this is where our students go, and these are the parking lots, and it's only to be kept as an emergency, and the master would be kept with, like, on a master file with the superintendent's office, but we have to always be prepared. You just never know, whether it's, you know, weather-related or something else. You always have to be prepared for an emergency, so I'd love to work on those with him as well. Any other, as far as this safety, security update, any questions on that? Okay, we can move on to the second item, which would be transportation update. So the first item would be bus routes.
So what, I don't know what the, can I talk?
Oh, absolutely.
I don't know what the correct motion would be, but I was wondering if we could take them together. I do have a short presentation that I wanted to give, if that's okay.
Sure. Perfect. So the presentation right now? Awesome.
Yes. Thank you so much. So Dr. Cobb's and Ms. Perez are both here to, to address this as well and to answer any questions, but one of the things that I'm making a priority this year is diving more deeply into the transportation, to learning more, you know, even just some of the very simple, basic things. And so I figured, as I was doing this over the course of the year, I'm sure I'm going to be providing you transportation updates over the course of the year, that I could kind of take you through my learnings, and that way the community too kind of understands the universe of transportation. So some of this may seem a little elementary, but I just want to let you know, kind of, again, what is the universe, the basic first questions that you ask, which are the number of vehicles that we have and the number of routes that we run. So this gives you an outline of how many full buses, half buses, wheelchair vans, and 7D vehicles that we have, so that's 140 vehicles total. So, and then also, you'll see on the right what the routes are that those buses travel. So we have 56 routes for the full buses, 65 for special education door-to-door. We have seven that are the wheelchair vans, 75% are special education, 25% are general ed, and then we have four routes for 7D vehicles. Obviously, you'll see that we have less routes than buses, which is good. You always need to have more buses on hand. You also, we also have, you know, that same amount of bus drivers to make sure that we have all of our routes, so we have 136 bus drivers right now, so we have enough to cover our routes to make sure that we can get transportation off the ground the first, the first day of school. As for, just wanted to give you some numbers. I think Ms. Perez has actually shared these with you before, but I think it's important to just kind of keep an eye on what the trends have been over time. So these are our special education transportation numbers. So in the out-of-district, it has gone up by 27, and this is as of last school year. So once we get October 1st school year numbers, I will update you on those. As for the in-district, because we also have in-district door-to-door, which is great, you know, keeping students in our district for their services, that has gone up over the last three years by 483 students. So transportation for our students experiencing homelessness, this number is, you know, exceptionally large and has gone over, gone up quite a bit over time. Also, just so that you're aware, the general ed buses, we have 7,000 students about right now who ride the bus to go to school every day. So just a typical day in transportation, it starts super early in the morning. People are getting there at like 4:30, 5:30 in the morning. Our mechanics are on-site to ensure that the vehicles are road-ready, and that if any repairs need to be made, that they're made immediately. Drivers report to work, they collect their keys, they, you know, we check for appropriate attire. It was actually wonderful. There was a kickoff for our bus drivers today, so a training session all day that was led by Ms. Perez and her team. I got to go by and visit and introduce myself to the bus drivers, and it was a very comprehensive day, going over all of the safety and security measures, and even some increased efficiencies that we're putting in place for this year. I will, again, I will report on those later on. This is just kind of the intro, but I do want to make sure that, that as the year goes on, I let you know all of the new increased efficiencies that Ms. Perez and her team have been working so diligently on. So there are pre and post checks every single day after their runs, and just to give you an idea too, of the way our bus driver routes are, is they're, they run 6:30 to 9:30, and then 1:30 to 4:30. 23 of the drivers actually also do a midday run from 11:15 to 1:15. So as for school year '24, '25, all of the big bus routes have been assigned and published on the website, so you can see all of the different buses, bus numbers, and their routes, their different bus stops. For out-of-district transportation, all of the routes have been sent out to the private vendors, and we have been receiving the bids back. It's actually been really helpful for me to see what that process looks like in real time. So for example, one specific one, there were 34 different bids that came in, which is great that we have such a level of competition, and those bids ranged from a range of $550 over the, from the least to the most. And so we really do have the ability to choose a very competitive rate, so that's been wonderful. Another thing that Ms. Perez and her team have been doing is letting, I mean, it's not a secret that we need support in transportation and that we need better prices, so she's just been putting it out there, that, hey, we are looking for competitive prices, if you can reduce your rates from last year, and they've actually, there's been a positive response. They've been reducing their rates from last year, so it's really wonderful. Again, I'll be able to give you a more comprehensive idea of what those costs look like, but thus far, we're feeling good about the way it looks. And then as for in-district special education, that's the third tier, so all the door-to-door van routes have been created, and hopefully I'm saying this correctly, most of them are done in-house, but we do have some that go out to private vendors. So about 1,300 are done internally, and we have about 256 that will need to go to private vendors. Now, the most important thing, what everybody's wondering about, is communication, so that's what we're working on right now. There have been various methods used throughout the years that I've been learning about, and I think what we are learning is going to, has been successful in the past, is making sure that it is up on Infinite Campus. So it will be uploaded to Infinite Campus, where families can go into their student portal, look in their student backpack, and then what we're working on now is that communication that you see to the left, that tells you when your bus is going to be there, what bus route you're on. Some version of this is already happening, so for example, if you go to the parent information center and they're registering you, that is sent out by the parent information center already, but what we're trying to do is really streamline that communication so that it is already there in the portal, and then our next step, which we'll be working with Infinite Campus on, is maybe potentially, they don't have the capacity to do this now, but push notifications where it lets families know, you got a new letter, and here it is, and here's your bus route. So hopefully, I stated all of that accurately. Again, this is an area of learning for me, and so I figured it was a great opportunity for me to present it as an area of learning for all of us. And again, I just want to thank Ms. Perez and her team. They've been working incredibly hard. Today's professional development went very, very well, and I am hoping for a really great school year, or I know it's going to be a great school year when it comes to transportation, and what I'm hoping you're going to see is cost-saving measures, because that is something in efficiencies that they're working on in their team.
Thank you. Do any of the members have any questions or comments? Mr. Vega, and then Mr. Sullivan?
I have a couple. But, so thank you for doing this. And I think, you know, I've said this before, I have no problem saying when I don't know something. I'm trying to get a better sense of what, what is the criteria that we use to determine when we need to do an in-district versus an out-of-district, right? What is the criteria for when we use our drivers versus private vendors, right? And in that, any education on what tiers mean would be, would be wonderful.
So these are all areas of learning for me, yes. So I want to make sure it is accurate, so I'm going to invite up the expert.
Hello.
Hello.
So the, we have a routing software called Versatrans that...
Can you just introduce yourself so people that are watching, I don't know who you are?
I'm Jen Perez, the Director of Transportation. Thank you. So we do have a software called Versatrans, where we put all our information in, everything that the parent registration sends to us, every new student, change of address, change of assignment, anything like that goes into a CIF agent in Versatrans, and then we have to go put it into a main system, so that way when we're able to route, that's how we do it. The in-district population is, is all the students that need door-to-door from special ed for the vans. Two years ago, they, it was approved to put pre-K into third tier, where it used to be into, in second tier. So, let me refrain. You want to know about the tiers. So first tier is high school, high school, Huntington, or Brockton Therapeutic. This year, it'll be, they'll, they've added on Promise, Edison, anybody of high school age will be first tier.
But like, what does being first tier mean, aside from, you know, the school that you go to?
So they, the timing. So they, they start, the bus routes all have three tiers. So first, it's the high school routes, then the middle school routes are second tier, and then third tier is elementary and pre-K for the past two years. So, so we do all the routes. Once they've reached our criteria, so we set in, you know, eight students, and door-to-door also has three minutes at each house. So you really can't put any more than eight to 10 students on a van, because they have to wait the three minutes. So after we reach our criteria, anybody that's left over is going to have to be on private transportation. So this year, like Priya said, it was 256 students were left over, were in overflow. So having pre-K in our third tier is not the best for us right now.
So from what I'm understanding, right, like, just the math of number of buses, number of kids we can put inside of the buses, amount of time they have to wait at the house, means that, you know, that we have a number of students that can't be served by our in-house buses?
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
And then the out-of-district is anybody, any of the students that go to, like, collaboratives, private day schools, public day schools outside the district. We can't, we can't educate them here in the district.
Thank you. Oh, wait. With the Versatrans software, are you saying that, like, we put in the addresses of our students and it generates, does it like, just quickly and smartly generate a route?
Yes. So we put in all the addresses, daycare address, whatever the address is that for the students, even for the big buses, and then it generates routes. We then have to go through, because sometimes if we're asking for, say, eight students on a van, it, to pull that eighth student might be somewhere across the district, so then we have to, you know, bring it back in and look at the routes and change them around a little.
And last question. What opportunities, like, what, like, what structure is in place for drivers to give feedback and thoughts on, on how, you know, we might get some efficiencies?
The drivers themselves?
Yeah.
They give us feedback every day.
Okay. Is it, is it just like verbal feedback? Like, is there a mechanism for it?
Just, it's usually verbal feedback.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
I have a quick question. For the 256 students going to private vendors, how many of the private vendors are going to be basically taking those route? Like, how many students per those buses do we have available?
So this year, we actually made the routes with the, with the 256, 256 students, we made the routes. made the routes, knowing that each vendor could only take five, because 70 vehicles can only house that many. So we sent them all out and, you know, we capped it off at $200 a route. So I don't know how many yet. You know, we just sent it out to ask, you know, who was available to do a third tier because it's only third tier. First tier and second tier are all on our vehicles.
So only five students per buses? Also another question, I know a lot of, there's like three different ways for parents to find out their bus route and their information. Just some parents are not able to, you know, maneuver those, you know, just for other reasons. Is there going to be enough personnel on hand, say Friday, for parents who's having trouble getting the information to get to, like to speak to somebody to get their bus route?
You mean for parents to call us?
If I call on Friday, am I going to wait while I'm working over 10 minutes to get somebody on the line to tell me where my bus route is?
No, we answer the phones all, and they've been off the hook the last few days.
So we want to make sure that somebody's also online waiting to help out the parents in different language, because a lot of the parents won't be able to like have access to, get to the online site. So I just want to make sure there's always somebody available in different language to help the parents find out what the bus route is.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Before I go to Mrs. Sullivan, I have some questions. So Ms. Perez, Ms. Oliver just touched base on that. So just so the parents know, it's usually the first couple of weeks, you always have extra hands on board to answer calls with like no bus shows, things like that. I know last year we did. The, you don't?
Two, I believe two years ago, we had a call center at, at Central.
So we don't have that anymore for the first couple of weeks while people are getting adjusted to bus stops, bus routes, things like that, no?
Not that I know of.
Okay. So that is a concern to just make sure parents can get through. I know when they can't get through to you guys, they call us and I have no problem calling, but it's, you know, kids are still at a bus stop, they haven't showed up. And the other thing is, is I know a couple of members have asked the question. Can we get a breakdown of, obviously, we don't need the children's names, we don't need the students' names. The door-to-door locations, how many students are on those door-to-doors on each bus? Because I do get a lot of calls, there's one or two kids on a bus, you know, what's going on here? So I'd like to see a breakdown of, these are our door-to-door. This is how many students are on this bus. It starts at this time and this is the last drop-off. Because you did mention there's like three, three minutes in between, three minutes at each home, but how far is it going from one house, house to another? I mean, some students are going to be on the bus for a while, even though it's only a three-minute stop.
So I did email the routes to all of you. I can print them out and get them to you?
Yeah, we do need, we spoke about that before. I saw it at 3:52 as I was walking out the door. We need material for our meetings at the meeting, actually prior to the meeting. So we can just at least review it and we can better be prepared for questions and not have to schedule another transportation meeting. So I do appreciate that, but I don't think, I happened to see it because I was reviewing something else. I'm not sure if any of the other members saw it tonight. So if we could get those printed, but with that printed out, if you can just give us the door-to-door ones, if it wasn't in that packet?
It was. I sent you two separate emails. One were, one was all the big buses, the next one were all the door-to-door vans.
Okay. If we can get those just printed out and given to Ms. Campbell for Friday's packet?
Sure.
Thank you. So I apologize. Was it Mr. Sullivan, then Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Sullivan and then Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, Jennifer. My question is, the computers on the, on the buses, where they can swipe their ID, are those in work in order now?
So I don't believe we're using the swipe your IDs. If we do that on the big buses, some of the bus stops have 30 students in it, on it at them, so they, I don't, I mean, I think we've all decided that that's probably not a good idea. We can do it if that's what we're told, but bus stops, you know, the bus stops the traffic and I think that will take a long time. The tablets are working and I called the company because they've never been used to come down and train us on how to have the drivers utilize it to do the routes, to give it, route by, you know, street-by-street directions for them. So we are going to train the drivers on how to use them.
Have you ever been told by one of the drivers that there's people on the bus that don't belong there?
Yes.
You have been told that?
Yes.
Well, if they had their IDs swiped, they wouldn't have anybody that wasn't supposed to be there. The reason I'm asking is because it costs a lot of money to put them in a couple of years ago and it's never been used.
It is this, it's the same tablet that is going to be used for the door-to-door directions. You're right, it has not been used. So I had to find out who the company was and I reached out to the company to have them, like I said, come down and train us for at least the route-by-route directions. If the, I know three years ago when they opened, I know that they, I think that they did the IDs and then we just, it was just never used, utilized.
The other question was, actually was for Priya, the, the very first video clip was about the bus depot. Is there going to be a bus depot?
So we are finalizing the bid with City Hall that will be put out in the newspapers and will be posted on the city site. So yes, hopefully so.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Vice Chair Rodriguez?
Thank you. Thank you, Jen. Just to piggyback off of Mr. Sullivan, you know, the committee approves certain things to be used and we spend a lot of money and just to find out that it's not being used, that's a huge disservice. And then when we find out that individuals that are on a bus that don't belong on a bus, that's very concerning because we don't know who those individuals are. And that leads to where some students are suspended, they're not supposed to be in school, they jump on, we catch them right there, we don't wait till they get to the school and they're inside and we have issues. But that needs to be fixed. And transportation is at the top and we've had conversations. I'll start off. With all the construction that's being done in the city, have you been in contact with the city side DPW to make sure that you have an actual date of when these road closures are going to be? Do you have to divert your routes, change bus stops? Because there's numerous roads that are under construction, that are going to be under construction. We just don't want to have more of a delay.
Right. So they'll send us an email on when they are going to have a delay or if there's an issue in the city that morning, they will send us an email.
Okay. I just don't want to, I know you said that there's a three-minute, who determines that three minutes or like, how do you determine that you have to wait three minutes?
Special ed.
Special ed, you have three minutes? The other, like how did you come up with the rates? I know I've talked to Superintendent, it's like how did you like determine what the rates are going to be with these private vendors?
Just for the in-district door-to-door routes, we had, I worked with Trish Boyer and she had kind of mapped out some pricing. So for Brockton to Brockton, she had said like $75 a student. So when we did them by routes over the last couple of days, we have five students on, we figured, you know, we just capped it at 200. That's less than the $75 a student.
So is that $200 a day?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the other, with the door-to-door, the private vendors out of district, what is the mechanism that you guys are using or are you guys using to verify that the student actually attended school? And the reason why I'm going to ask is this. I seen an invoice that a private vendor charged the district for Juneteenth. We weren't open on Juneteenth. So how do we, how do we, are you guys verifying to make sure? Because when I look back at some of these invoices, it's, you know, and I looked at it, this is the reason why I'm asking. A student lives in Whitman, homeless, that student doesn't make it to school, so we pay them that one-way trip. Then you look at the invoice, they charging you both ways. How does that happen? Like who misses that? Like who's in charge of actually looking at to making sure that these students actually make it to school? Because that's stealing.
So the out-of-district population is very tough. I rely on the special ed department and the out-of-district coordinator to send me those calendars from those schools. When I was in special ed and I, and I did that billing all those years, I would work with the out-of-district coordinator and the admin assistant that would pay the tuitions for each of those schools. Now that it's, now that the McKinney-Vento and the special ed are over in our department, it's, it's tough. I'm going to say it is tough. I, I pay every single one of those invoices and I have an admin assistant that helps, the two of us, but we're just, we check the in-district ones definitely on Infinite Campus, the ones that go to our school, but the out-of-district population, we do have to get better, but it is, it's very tough to do.
Is, do you receive an attendance record with those students specifically from those schools or you have to physically go in to make sure that that student made? For example, there's, at the R-N-O-N, there's 12 students that are out of district. That school should tell you if that student, those 12 students made it to school or not.
I think we're talking about two different things. Are you talking about the students that come to our schools that live outside the district?
Both, in-district and out-of-district.
So the students...
They're still getting charged no matter what.
So any of the students that come to our school, we do look at Infinite Campus. If there is a driver that is charging one price to do three students at that school, if one of them is going, we have to pay that price anyways. You know what I mean? If they're on the same van. So we do check the Infinite Campus for the in-district schools. The out-of-district schools, the kids that do not go to school in Brockton, that's where we have to get, we, we do have to get better. I do need the help from special ed. You know, I think the billing would, and the billing and that portion would be better in the departments. I have asked for that just because they have the, the resources to do so.
Okay. The, the other, the other, how familiar are you with the collective bargaining agreement with the drivers?
As far as their contract? I mean, I know their contract, but nobody from transportation was part of the collective bargaining from what I was told.
So while I'm asking you, I'm not trying to be like as a member of the city council, but what I'm asking you is this. So when I look at the contract and I see that every employee within transportation is supposed to punch time card?
We've, they've never had a time clock.
This leads to my other question. So they get paid six, six and a half hours to drive. So if they're done and they have an hour left on their shift, they should be remaining on the property just in case if you have another route that pops up on emergency to send them.
I'm 100% on board with you, but Teamsters has said that in their contract, they are to do their home-to-school and school-to-home route. They don't have to do anything extra.
But what I'm asking is, are we using the time card or, that needs to be implemented? Is there, do we have the time cards? Do we have that set up? Because that's in their contract. That needs to be done.
Okay. Superintendent?
So yes, we are, there are several different things that I know that and I've heard from the committee as well that we are working on implementing. One thing that I also do want to mention is that we are moving forward with the, the audit. It is starting. In fact, Jen and her team, or Ms. Perez and her team have actually already provided because they were at least able, even though they haven't started services, they were at least able to provide, or before they started services, they were at least able to provide all of the data collection we needed to do because it was pretty extensive. And so Ms. Perez and her team have provided them with all the data so that when they start to analyze all of our processes, we can see if there are ways that we can do this more efficiently. So there certainly is a lot of area for growth for sure. And we have been working on the bid to get that out, to make sure that that's, that's been, you know, a conversation back and forth between the city to make sure that that's finalized and that is looking exactly as it should. So this is all to say that yes, it is not, it is by no means perfect. I am aware of those dates where things maybe weren't running. And I think to Ms. Perez's point, another one of the things that we're, that we need to do, but then also that we are looking to the audit to sort of help us do, is figure out what is an appropriate staffing model for the transportation office? Is what we're doing right now the most efficient? The way to make sure that there are all of the checks and balances that we need. Because I think we have certainly identified a lot of these areas as areas for growth and I think it is going to take us some time to get there.
Thank you, Superintendent. I know, you know, we talk a lot, but transportation, from day one, I've always said there was going to be some hiccup side, requested an audit. It's transportation over closer to two years now and it's just now starting, which is sad. When it comes to licenses, I know we have some mechanics over there. Are they properly licensed? Because they do have to drive our buses.
So we have one mechanic right now that has his CDL. The other two are going to be, going to take the training.
Isn't that a requirement before you get the job?
I don't believe it was when the first one came onboard. The other two, I'm not sure. I didn't do the interviews.
So as the transportation director, they don't include you into the interviews?
They, they actually fall under facilities, the mechanics.
Okay. I will follow up with the Superintendent and HR Director on that one because that's concerning to me knowing that we have some mechanics that are driving our buses that are not properly licensed.
I agree. They do not drive them off the bus depot. They will drive them from the, where the bus lot is to the garage.
The other one is, it's, you know, spend a lot of money on their uniforms, shirts, they're supposed to be wearing it. Is that going to be strongly enforced? Because there's a lot of money that we paid for that.
Yes.
And sometimes we're in the city and I know I talk to you a lot and I see some of these drivers and they're not wearing them. It's like, what are we buying them for?
Yes, so we, we changed it over the summer for, for them to come in every morning and pick up their key and to bring their key back in the afternoon so we can make sure that they're, you know, they have their uniform, their vest, the proper shoes. Before, they would just keep, they had the same bus all year, so they would keep the key. But this is going to help us with making sure that they're on time. Is somebody late? Did somebody not show up?
And we're actually writing them up, giving them verbal warnings and following the whole collective bargaining to make sure that we have documented instances of that. Because I know, you know, I, you know, I, I'm in the gym, working out and somebody comes up to me and tells me there's a, there's a bus parked in the parking lot. I don't know why the bus is there. You know, so and I have to revert to you, like, do these drivers know that it's from their routes and back to the lot and not going to do their errands? I see it a lot.
Right.
And my counterparts see it a lot. You know, it, it needs to be strongly enforced because, you know, I shouldn't have to call you, you know, that's their job. And then they're thinking that we're out there spying on them or not, we're just doing our daily duties.
Exactly.
So I yield.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions and then we're getting close on time, so I'm going to keep mine quick. So question, I know when Dr. Murray was here, I had asked him about communication with roadwork and what can we do to make sure? Because communication wasn't the best, to be honest. I don't know how it is now, but I know I just looped around a few times today just to go on Montello Street and I was going in circles. So I can't imagine our students waiting at bus stops. So who is your direct contact? Do we need to get you a good direct contact that on a daily basis? Because things change. You know, roadwork might get delayed. So we just need to make sure that the city is communicating with you to give you, because you need that for your buses and for your drivers. You know, we got to give them that info to make their, their, you know, their routes a little easier for them.
Sure. You can get me a direct contact.
So you don't have a direct contact right now? I assumed if it was Mr. ... Okay, so we can, we can, we can have Superintendent DeHiliani?
That would be...
We will get you a direct contact. I think it was Mr. Hill, but we'll get you a direct contact. So they can check in with you or just a one-on-one quick message. That way you have their direct info and if they're not available, you'll have whoever's there filling in. And then I agree with the rest of my committee, a few of them. We pay a lot of money for all these things to go into our school. One of them is, where's my bus? I've been asking about that for what, four years now? I'm not going to ask, but we pay for things. We, we have other districts that can track their busing. It's really important that with the older students, we need to know who's on our buses with our kids, who's going, you know, we can't have the honor system, oh, you know, come on. We need that scanning. So whatever, we need to get that implemented, let's get the school started, but they need to have, the older students have to have their IDs to get into school anyways. They're going to have to get into the habit of having their IDs ready, get in, scan it, get on the bus. Not every single stop's going to be 20, 30 kids. I know where I am, it's a large, over at Sawtelle Lab, a lot of students, but they're just going to have to get in the habit. It's for their safety and it's also in case of an emergency, we need to know who's on those buses. those buses, in case we have to notify family if, if, if something happens to a student, and, you know, they need to get redirected, you know, medical emergency or something. So, um, you have the info, we're gonna get that implemented?
To do the, to do the swipe cards?
Yes.
If that's what I'm told to do, yes. Um, I'm gonna have to get the drivers onboard, 'cause I don't know if you're, if you get an unruly student, if they're not gonna get off the bus, what am I going to do with my driver?
So, I hate to tell the public, but we only have to provide buses for the younger students. It's a privilege for middle school and high school. You wanna take our buses, these are the rules. You don't, you don't follow the rules, you don't come on the bus. We need to know who's on our buses, and to make sure they're taking the right bus. Um, and they're not just, you know, we have kids that can't get on the bus, because some of our buses are full, and they qualify, let alone have someone just take the bus, and they're not even supposed to be on there.
Right.
So yes, I mean, it, do we have to vote on that?
And I do send the list of the students who are approved to be on the bus to the schools, usually every couple of months, so they have the list and the students.
Yeah, I mean, the high school, I know, I used to just, the high school's gonna be hard for them to keep track of. Middle, middle school is a little more manageable, elementary school, absolutely, but it's, it's gotta be a little, you know, the high school's gonna be a tough one to keep track of, and that's why I think it's very important that we keep track of, have them scan it. We have it, we paid for it, you know, these are all, all items that were added to our buses. Um, we need to know who's on our buses.
Okay.
Okay. So that's-
Not sure if it will be, it probably won't be ready for the first day.
No, not for the first day, but at least, you know, give, at least by the end of September. Um, and if they give any pushback, it's, it's not a choice. You wanna take the bus, like you go into the school, you have to scan your ID. This, this is, rules are rules. Um, but I don't think we need to vote on anything. Ms. Oliver then Mr. Rodriguez?
Just to, uh, piggyback on the three-minute, um, for the vent, for the buses, for the young ones, for the specialized kids, is that three minutes for the kid to get out of their home into a bus, and then also three minutes for somebody to get out of the house to take them out of the bus? Is that's all they get, three minutes?
No, they get, well, they get, when we pick them up in the morning, they get three minutes to come out. When we're dropping them off, nine times out of ten, the, the driver is calling us, and the office is calling the home to say, you know, the bus is outside, or the van's outside, and if nobody's home, we have to send, we have to send the van back to the school.
And this three minutes came from the special ed department?
Yes.
Okay. As, I'm gonna speak for advocating for all moms and parents out there that have a special-need child, no way a child's coming out with special needs in three minutes. So I don't know how we can go about, I wanna make sure there's no bus leaving while this situation happening in the home, especially getting a child ready for school. There's a lot of things can happen, especially when you have an autistic kid or any disability child. There's no way a, a parent is gonna be able to do three minutes to get that child in a bus. So we need to figure out how we can work with the parents, 'cause three minutes, it's, it's a little bit short for our special kids.
So the drivers will call us in the morning if they've waited three minutes, and we will call the house. If we don't get an answer, we do tell the bus, the vans to move on.
Okay. Just wanna make sure, maybe we can change it more than three minutes.
Thank you. Um, Vice Chair Rodriguez?
No, just on the, uh, you know, the student IDs swiping in, I mean, I don't, that, that was already implemented when we, uh, when we purchased these buses, and it's, it's not a question if the drivers are gonna be onboard with it, they have to do it. And if they're not doing it, then they get written up and they can find another job somewhere else. That's just plain and simple. They need to understand it, student safety first.
But I have to, I have to worry about their safety, too.
Yeah, I know, I know, but like, the training and, and so forth, it has to come on that, and, you know, it's disheartening that it, it hasn't happened, and it's gonna take time, but they do need to realize that this was bought, it was purchased, this is the reason why it's being done, it has to be done, we're gonna work at it, and we're gonna, and it has to be implemented. It's, that's just what it is, there's no negotiations. You took this job, this is what it entails, and it has to be done.
Okay. We are getting close on time. I just had a quick, to follow up on Mr. Rodriguez. We have cameras on the bus.
Mm-hmm.
They can always report it to the principal when they get to the school, and report it to, um, transportation, if they feel unsafe for some reason. Um, but again, rules are rules. Um, we are getting close on time, if we can, we'll do another meeting again, but-
Real quick.
Mr. Sullivan then Mr. Vega.
Thank you, Jen. I just have one question, you're talking about the mechanics, you know, uh, they're studying now for the CDLs?
They are gonna take the course in September for the CDL in-house.
What happens right now, Jennifer, if a bus breaks down, and the mechanics go out, and somebody's gonna drive it back?
Um, usually one of our dispatches or a driver will go out with them.
The mechanic doesn't drive it back?
The, no, they go out to the, if it's broken down, they go out to see if they can fix it. If they can't, then a driver will go out and drive it back.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Vega?
Thank you. Um, so, uh, quick question is, uh, so what's the maximum number of students that we put on a bus, um, and what's the minimum number, what's the lowest number that we have on any bus or van?
So on the bus, we try to, on the big bus, we try to cap it to forty-five, fifty, that's two to a seat. Um, on the vans, like I said, we really, I mean, last year we had some with eleven and twelve on the vans, but that's, that's tight.
But we don't have, I, but in terms of the minimum, do we have any vans that are traveling with, like, less than three kids on it?
Sometimes the wheelchair vans.
Okay. And, a, a, and is it possible with the vans or buses that are carrying with lower capacity, that they could be put on routes to pick up other, um, you know, so, so if I happen to be on a route where I only have two students on, on, on my van, could that van be routed along routes that would benefit from?
So we do do that. We have a lot of families, um, with students that have doctor's notes. I run it by the director of nursing, if she approves it, we either try to put them on a bus stop close, real close to their house, um, you know, we'll make a bus stop, or we will put them on the van. Um, same with a McKinny-Vento kid. The, um, children's experience in homelessness, if they're Brockton to Brockton, we do try to get them on, you know, one of our vehicles.
Thank you.
Um, this is a very knowledgeable subcommittee, and that's why it's important, we, we, we'll address it at a different, at the meeting later, but this is one of those subcommittees that really should be a committee of a whole, 'cause we do have so many questions. Um, Mr. Rodriguez?
The, the other pieces that, um, I'll work with the superintendent, I wanna see where our, where we are with, um, when we, um, rent out our buses, you know, what those fees look like, because I know it made us some money, and we're searching for it, to see where it went, um, so it could be more efficient, because I've gotten quite a complaints that they call transportation to rent out the buses for any type of occasion, and we're being told they're not doing it anymore, and we did this to actually, you know, if it can make the district money, and it can save us in, in other areas, and pay for our maintenance of our buses or anything else, that should be done, so.
Sure.
I'll work with the superintendent and yourself to make sure that, that's done, and that we have the audit, um, finally starting after two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um, actually, that was one of the main reasons we were, ordered our buses, it was always on our wish list, we got the buses, and it, one of the, one of the items was to be able to rent them out, whether it's to the senior center or different clubs, things like that, um, to be able to generate, also offer it to those, you know, surrounding areas in our city, but to also bring in a little money to cover some of the expenses. Um, one last thing that I have is, when we talked about the out-of-district that are going to other schools, it might not be a bad idea to make sure that the schools notify us if a student's not there, they have to call and notify us, because if we're paying for a student to be dropped off at a school, you're not gonna know whether or not they're dropped off. You're gonna have to rely on finding out, either the driver needs to report a student is a no-show or is absent, um, for other reasons, or the school. We need to work on that, rather than just get billed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, you know, we, we're trying our best to, you know, get a better grasp on the finances, so I think, is there any other members with any comments or questions? We are running close to our next meeting, we're actually at 6:30. Uh, we can schedule another transportation after school starts, Ms. Perez, maybe towards the end of September, we'll invite you back, and that way we can see where we are as far as the scanning of the IDs, how we're doing on the bus routes, if some routes are a little longer than others, um, some, what, someone's finishing an hour earlier, others are working right up, we might have to just rearrange some of our routes, um, see where we are. Um, Mr. Vice Chair, did you have a question?
No, and we'll, I'll work with the superintendent and we'll kind of have her come before us on a, I don't wanna say regular basis, but on a monthly basis, giving us an update on transportation and where we are, so.
Thank you, Ms. Perez.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, so that brings us to, the next item would be other business. Do we have any other business? No. So we will, we will, um, schedule another, um, safety, safe, security, safety, transportation subcommittee meeting for, towards the end of September, just so we can get an update, um, and that way we can see what's going on. So, all right, we are running a few minutes, um, into the next meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Sullivan, probably.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. All in favor, show a hands. Unanimous, thank you. Um, we are gonna be getting ready for our next meeting, that's gonna start in a few minutes. Meeting adjourned.